Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the December 1st meeting of the Town Standards Planning Board. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and to look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify me if you are unable to hear or see the material. Excuse me. The board works from a prepared agenda this evening. We have the approval of the previous minutes for November 3rd. We have one finding of fact for Cody Parker on Paxton Drive Extension. We have two items of old business. Westerly Way for a three lot subdivision, Pine Tree Estates for 97 new home spots. We have no new items of business, and we have one public hearing relative to the Board of Appeals on Chapter 181. The applicant has the burden to prove to the board that their application is complete and meets all applicable town standards. Any person wishing to address the board may do so in accordance with the following procedures. Please utilize the podium or one of the provided microphones. The board will open the public hearing for the applicant to present their project. The town plan will provide his assessment of the project and hear responses from the applicant. Board members will then ask questions and hear responses. The hearing will then be open to the public for comment, and the applicant can respond to those comments. The board may receive any oral or documentary evidence, but such evidence is restricted to the subject matter of the agenda item. The board shall exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or unduly repetitious evidence. Citizens shall refrain from interrupting other speakers. The meeting is being tape recorded. It is very difficult to hear what is being said when multiple people speak at the same time. Citizens shall avoid personal attacks and conduct themselves in a civil courteous manner as expected by all participants. All questions should be addressed through the chair. Speakers shall not attempt to engage in debate with other meeting participants. Upon hearing from the public, the hearing will be closed for the application, and the board will deliberate and vote on the application. Following the decision on the application, either towards the end of the meeting or at the board's next regular meeting, the board will prepare written finding of facts and approve them for the records. Okay, we do have a quorum this evening. There are six of us are present. We have one out of six, so Sean Sheehan is out.
Mr. Chair, you had some modification of the minutes, I thought, you were talking to Jackie about?
I did, yes. Page three of the minutes. At the very top, it says, "Plans call for removing poorly drained soils and replacing them with free drain materials to restore the proper internal drainage." I believe we were talking right after soils, it should say, "within the roadways." It's not on the entire site. That was the only thing I came up with.
I'll make a motion to...
Well, I had one also.
Go for it.
On that same page, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the seventh paragraph. "The typical local road cross-section includes 18-inch gravel shoulders on both sides to protect pavement and edges and aid drainage. The board discussed reducing gravel to grass on one side but agreed to maintain current standards for durability. We did agree on one side to have it be loamed and seeded to the edge, the sidewalk side."
Right.
Right.
That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, okay. I guess that's what it says.
Yeah.
All right, sorry about that.
Is there a motion to approve as amended?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented with the amendments.
Well, wait.
We're going to go to the discussion.
Can we just go over that again? It says, "The board discussed reducing the grass on one side but agreed to maintain the current standards for durability. What we agreed to was to have grass on one side and an 18-inch gravel shoulder on the other. That's what we agreed to."
Yeah, it just doesn't seem very detailed in that summary, right? It almost kind of combined a lot of...
It makes it sound like it's going to still have the 18-inch gravel shoulders on both sides, when it's really going to be grass on one side and 18-inch gravel shoulder on the other side, the non-sidewalk side.
So after, it says, "Maintain current standards."
Well...
It should say, "For one side of the road, for 18 inches on one side of the road, and grass on the other."
You could say, "The board agreed to grass on the sidewalk side but will maintain the current standard," or "The 18-inch gravel shoulder on the non-sidewalk side."
Discuss reducing gravel to grass on one side. Agree to maintain...
Maintain the current standard.
Yeah, it's almost like it's missing on the other side, right? Because it talks about the grass on one side, but then it doesn't talk about...
Yeah, it's grass on one side and the gravel on the non-sidewalk side.
So we're gonna...
However we want to word it. But that's what we agreed to.
So maybe just adding at the end to the other side? I don't know if that's the easiest.
Yeah, right at the very end, you could put, "And..." "And grass on the sidewalk side." And, "With loam and seeding the shoulder?"
Right. Up to where there's the esplanade, the sidewalk, and then loam and seeding up to the edge of the sidewalk.
So if we go right, add that right at the end, "After durability." So reducing gravel to take the grass off right there on one side, but agreed to ma... Doesn't read right. Discuss reducing gravel on one side.
On the sidewalk side, I think is the point, yeah.
But agreed to maintaining current standards for durability on the other.
On non-sidewalk side.
Where do you want to put that? We'd have to gravel to...
"The board discussed reducing gravel to..." And, "To non-sidewalk side." Wait, that's not reducing the gravel. "To maintain gravel on non-sidewalk side but loam and seed on the sidewalk side."
So you want the board discussed maintaining gravel?
Yeah, the board just, the board decided or just, or...
On sidewalk side.
But loam and grass on the sidewalk side.
Typical local road cross-section includes 18-inch gravel on both sides to protect pavement, edges, and aid drainage. The board discussed maintaining gravel on the nine side, on the non-sidewalk side.
On one side, yeah.
To maintain current standards. I got it wrong here. On the non-sidewalk side, and loam and seed on the sidewalk side of the road.
Yes, thank you.
to maintain current standards for durability, and loam and seed on the other, on the sidewalk side of the road. Good with that? Is there a second for this motion we had out there? We've been discussing this other turn here.
I'll pick it up.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Are you good with the Second Amendment, Todd?
Yes.
Signal further discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. We have a finding of facts for Cody Parker, doing business of Southern Main Property and Development. This was on Paxton Drive Extension, him to build a duplex at the end. And we seem to have the, item number five is there, where we talked about upgrading Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the finding of facts. Heard the discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? Twelve one. Very good. First item of old business. Westerly Way, map 20, lot eight, subdivision application for a three lot subdivision. Just to see more. I assume you're making the presentation.
My name is Jim Seymour with Sebago Technical, Civil Engineer and Project Manager, representing Westerly Way Subdivision this evening. We were here last month with the board, or actually, two months ago with the board, discussing this, and some questions came up with regards to certain items, primarily the lot width, shore frontage. There were some questions about an access right-of-way at once served at Marshall Lot, and then there was responses to Goral Palmer's review. We have responded to Goral Palmer's review. We did receive, which I did not have time to respond to, additional comments from Goral Palmer, but in reviewing them quickly, relatively small things, riprap on pipe ends. There was some questions about stormwater buffers, but what I'd like to do is, where this is going to the DEP for an amended site location, I would like to have the board at least wait till we hear from DEP to understand, you know, if they have similar comments or whether they're okay with the buffers that we have shown them. So quickly, I'll go through. This is a three lot subdivision. I've colored the lots in yellow, blue, and pink, so you can have a better understanding. The green strips are buffers. Gray area is the section that is private road. We have now extended that private road so that the pink lot has frontage on that. Also, each lot has 200 feet of width at the shore, as required under the Shoreland Zoning Ordinance. We did have conversations with JP, the code enforcement officer, about how we measure lot widths, and we really didn't get much resolved. JP basically threw it back to you folks here at the planning board to determine what would be appropriate. If you look at the blue lot, you can see down by the shore, we've put some approximate building, building footprints on the plan. In the blue lot, you can see that with the 200-foot width right at the 100-foot setback, the one on the blue lot, trying to obtain closest to the shore, gets squeezed up against the wetlands, which are in that dark green. Looking at Chapter 100 from main DEP Shoreland zoning, having discussion with some other code officers in local municipalities, it's my understanding that once we get outside the 100-foot setback, that the lot can actually, like a waist, come in a little bit and go back out. It's not required to be 200 feet for the whole entire width of that lot. So I do have a sketch here this evening, which is something I'd like to discuss with the board, but I'll wait a little bit on that one, to what we'd like to put a little bump out into the pink for the blue lot to give it a better footprint. Of most relevance, which I think is still based on Scott's comments, which he'd like to go over this evening, there was a concern raised by a residence that there once, on the Marshall Lot, which is up on White's Bridge Road, adjacent to Westerly Way and White's Bridge Road, there was once an easement that perverse the whole entire length of that parcel. I have, just so we can share some common knowledge, a quick sketch here. I'll pass it to you, so you can see what we're talking about.
Yes, please. Thank you.
So this is the original St. Joseph's survey done by SMRT, and the question is, if you look on the line here, I've put here, "Area of 10-foot wide, Marshall only, right-of-way." In reviewing the deeds, it's apparent that that right-of-way, which is the Marshall Lot, is the lot, it's the square box beyond the green, which now I show is the approximate field location, was to serve the Marshals, exclusively the Marshals, for the purposes of access to the lake. 2008, the Marshals sold that property to St. Joseph's College. So because the deed says personally only, the only thing that the attorneys could come back with is if one of the Marshals, Robert or Shirley, were still alive, technically they could have maybe access to this, but the question would be is, now that St. Joseph's own everything, and this access has no access from another private road, they really would be limited to how they could get access, because they don't own their own parcel. The only way they could potentially maybe have access would be if they canoed in on Sebago Lake. They could have a 10-foot swath to walk up to once was their property, but as you can see by the approximate green box, that's the approximate location of the current soccer field. So it's our understanding that in 2008, when St. Joseph's purchased this property, essentially that easement died to the Marshals. I believe Mr. Marshall may have passed, I'm not certain of that, because when, 2008, it was only Shirley who actually sold the property to St. Joseph's College. So it's our understanding that that easement is basically now in void, and if you look at the deed that was submitted, that was for the property purchased from St. Joseph's, it does not reference that easement any further. And in fact, I do believe when we came to this board, we did the soccer fields, I think it was 2008, this came up at that point, and again, it was determined that that was dissolved. If we look at the plan, I'll walk over to it. This would be the line of where that easement would continue, down here, all the way up, continuing up through. There currently is remnants of an old woods road, I would call it. It's not in horrible shape, but it is just that. It's just an old woods road. There are fallen trees on it. It's not open to the public. So with that, even if it were to remain, it does not follow, I tell you personally, it does not follow the easement perfectly. It kind of meanders in and out, but it would not have any impact on the building envelope due to the side setbacks of 25 feet, but we feel that it has been dissolved. So that's the first item. The second item was on the plan as well. We've put what our anticipated Shoreland Zone impacts are in a table at the bottom. None of these lots, two and three, the pink and the blue, exceed 20% in previous coverage for their portion in the Shoreland Zone. Standard has been met as well. I forgot to mention the area beyond the gray that shows kind of a purple and blue strip. That's just the 50-foot access easement from the end of the right-of-way for both lots to share a common driveway. They both have access to the road, private road. The only other piece of information I have to share with you this evening would be just an idea of what we'd like to do, in that we can move the lot line. The board is open to that discussion on lot two and three. The area in pink that I'm, on the sheet that I'm passing out, is what we'd like to switch to lot two and three, to give the building more space. We have a ways to go with DEP. This is an amended site location. They have accepted the application, but we know with the DEP, we could be waiting a few months before we hear any feedback. And I know that prior to this board giving final approval, we will need that DEP approval. So, open for any questions or comments with regards to the application and the information issue?
We'll be opening to the public shortly. Would you like to add anything, Scott?
I think he covered all the issues we've got in front of us pretty well. I don't have any further comments on anything since the memos went out to you. I think we're all in pretty good shape on this one.
One thing I did miss, I forgot to mention was, there's still the waiver criteria for the road, private road, Westerly Way. We know early when we discussed this, the neighbors were against the widening of that road, and so we've requested that Westerly Way stay its current width and not be widened any further to meet the town private road standards. The front end up by St. Joseph's is 22 feet wide. As we get past the parking lot for the fields, it drops down to 16 feet. In discussions with the neighbors to, that access that on the lake, they wish for that to stay 16 feet, so therefore we've requested the waiver.
Yeah, so I don't have any further comment from town staff past the memo for that, the road standards. We have changed the ordinance somewhat for the grandfathered existing private roads, so I don't believe any requirement to widen Westerly Way exists at this time, with the sign-off of Public Works and Public Safety, which have both reviewed this and given their okay on. The waiver's primarily to build the new road that serves these three lots off of Westerly Way as a private road, and then it would have to meet the private road standards. We talked about that a little bit last time. I think there's clear language in the ordinance to give you jurisdiction for that, where it says, "One of the grounds on which you can waive things is a lack of connecting facilities." And since this is coming off of a private way, doesn't need to, it would be hard for the town to accept it as a public way that they don't have direct network access to. So... So the Public Safety, Public Works are both okay with that waiver. The only real major outstanding item is responding officially to those comments to Goral Palmer. And I think the app can has a reasonable request at this point too, that they'd like some more feedback from DEP before they finalize those.
All right. Talk about the lot width. As we read the ordinance, the lot width is defined as the width of the lot measured at a point where the building is closest to the right of way. Assuming the right of way is the gray, the gray color. That would, to me, that means it's the back of the building. Because that's the back of the building away from the lake is the closest to the right of way. I don't know how anybody else reads that.
So I would read it too.
So the lot width in this case is two hundred feet? Why does the pink lot? I don't see lot widths on here anywhere.
Twenty-five feet.
They're both, the pink lot is two hundred. The blue lot is like two hundred and nineteen, two hundred and twenty.
Could you point out, please, on the drawing? What would be the two measuring points for two hundred feet? Don't have to mark it up, just kind of point.
So we measured the two hundred foot width parallel to the shoreline and then two hundred feet parallel with this line. This is over two hundred feet as well. So I'm not sure JP would be present to get your road frontage. So I'm not sure if he would look at it this way or whether he'd look at it this way. JP called and he was not willing to answer that at this time. Because you've got it's kind of on a corner of the right of way. But.
That's not where it's the closest to the building. The closest to the building is wherever the building is.
And would that be a, because we don't know at this time exactly where that building could go. We know, we can make an assumption that it's going to be as close to the lake as possible, a hundred feet. But we don't know that for certain. Fair assumption. Something that would be applied at building permit? Or would we have to show acceptable no on the subdivision plan?
Good questions.
It's convoluted and with shoreline zoning, it adds another wrinkle to everything. And essentially what JP had relayed to me was it'd be a planning board condition or recommendation.
All right.
Because all I could find under shoreline zoning was two hundred feet measured at the hundred foot setback. But you have your own lot width definition.
Shoreline zoning definitions, I don't see anything about lot width, lot area.
Yeah, there's lot area, but under, I believe, under chapter one thousand, it does have that stigma of.
Yeah.
If you, you have to have two hundred feet of frontage as measured parallel to the shoreline.
Yes, outside of the ordinance book, you're at state level.
You need that two hundred frontage and then you're expected to maintain that two hundred at least through the building setback.
Well, the wood members, what do you think?
Well, well, it fails, you get scale out.
One question I have is, is do we have any precedent on that interpretation? Is this so unique that we don't have a precedent?
I mean, I think the layout that is presented on that board there clearly meets the ordinance. However, way we interpret what is the front, like which direction is width. We have two hundred at the building and we've got well in excess of that if we're going perpendicular to the lake. And so that is very much the cleanest way to do this. I am seeing the alternative layout for the first time here tonight as you are. Makes me somewhat nervous that that changes. We are uncertain then if the building location will meet the ordinance. Clearly, they are showing their example buildings in a place that would make it so. This potentially does not meet the ordinance in terms of lot width. They have a configuration that works and is constrained, but it works. That would be my recommendation.
I don't see how you're going to maintain the lot width on two hun- So you got two hundred feet of frontage on the private way. Then you got the easement that goes beyond that. So the lot width, if it's measured at the nearest point to the right of way, it's going to be the back of the building.
Yes. Though I think the question is if we are, if the width is the distance between side property lines and the frontage is being acquired along the long property line, does that mean that that is the front and therefore width is measured the entire perpendicularly to the lake? Because the frontage is on the road.
You have two frontages here. You have frontage on the right of way and frontage on the lake, which can be a right of way.
Again, it is simplest if we say this is two hundred in all directions and therefore it meets it in all directions.
And I don't know if this would be something while to run by town's attorney. Obviously, we do have some time because we're waiting on the DEP and we need to come back to you once we get that.
Are those wetlands located? Is that typical backpack GPS plus or minus ten fifteen feet?
Yes, I believe that's what Mark, I'd have to confirm that. Mark Sensei was the one that did the wetlands.
So those lines might not even be right.
But I do believe, I do believe, I think Wayne Wood may have picked up those points. I can confirm that because we did not do the wetlands on this one. I believe Wayne Wood may have actually surveyed his flags.
Just hundred scale?
Yeah. Land's at fifty scale, the big plan.
I got one of those here. The building's fifty by.
It's a good size.
Fifty by sixty-five right now.
Yeah, it's a little over like thirty-two, thirty-three hundred square feet, knowing that it would be a big home to put on that lot.
And what was JP's thing on this? He doesn't understand where the lot width is measured?
I was not part of the conversation with JP.
It was a private conversation. He was saying lot width is lot width, but he said the board can do what it wants. He is in agreement that the hundred foot is measured parallel to the shoreline and then it's measured parallel to the road frontage, or as you said, the home. And this is where it gets, which interpretation do you use?
Because right now, on the backside of the, if you take the corner of the building, that's the closest to the road to the east, that lot's two hundred and twenty feet wide and the other lots less than two hundred feet. Maybe it's two hundred on the face of the building, I don't know. I have got another question. How come the turnaround so far from the end of the road?
That's where we originally put that.
Not that it matters, I don't think on a private way, we, as long as Public Works and Public Safety are okay with it.
We could spin that around. We were trying to utilize that turnaround for our buffers, the way the land orientates.
Well, that's fine, it's just odd.
But it could go, technically, it could go into lot two around the corner. It would rotate the other side.
Right.
Be on the right side instead of the left side.
And probably building setbacks don't belong in the wetlands. If you're going to correct the plan.
Yep.
For final. Probably don't want to put the iron pins below the high water mark between the two lots.
No, I think we, oh.
On the shore, we got one pin that's halfway between wherever the water was in the actual high water line.
Yeah, that was the tie line. We could do it offset.
Yeah, I would suggest it goes above the.
We had it set at between the.
And then we didn't have in our plan set, C one oh three and one oh four, which are the plan and profile sheets. They never got included. Now, while I didn't have it in mind, anybody else get, and there's the F C one oh three, one oh four, which is the plan and profile sheets? They were on the electronic copies, I think.
Make sure you get copy of those. It's a gentle slope down through there after doing our site walk. I think it was really evident that it's pretty five to six percent max down through there and it's pretty level.
How did the site walk go? I didn't make it.
Frank was in charge of that one.
It went pretty well. The only question that I had is that St. Joseph's College still had some signage up on the property that they don't own anymore.
Right, yeah, they'll have to remove that. It was for the old trails, the cross-country trails.
So that's the one thing that caught my eye is that to someone that doesn't know would appear like they still own the land.
Yep.
Based upon the signage that I saw. But if that's not, that's the only concern, that's the only concern or question I had in my mind is why is it still marked out as a St. Joseph's property?
Shows it as a trail.
Right, it shows it.
We can discuss with St. Joseph's to remove that. Although they have relocated the trail.
On C one oh two, you probably ought to have moved the underground utility so it goes to the utility pole rather than the centerline of Westley Way. At the beginning. And the buffers need to be staked as per Goral Palmer agreement?
Yeah, we can put.
We have buffer pins available.
Usually put a buffer cap or in a smaller pin on those. I think that, I don't know if the DEP's requiring that or not, but we can do that.
And the back lot road section, was that for anything in particular? Or is that going down to the two buildings or is that something?
Back lot is actually, it's kind of reversed. The back lot is really the private way because originally, if you remember correctly, we had two lots. So that back lot matches Westley Way, which is the private way. And then the access is the twelve foot for the two. And we kind of wrecked the title on that.
A good idea. Good idea. I was confused.
I just have C one oh two.
Yeah, you don't have three and four.
No, I do not.
Which is the plan and profile sheets. I looked at them and I think the only thing I saw was that the proposed profile was erratic. Like they just copied the contours. It's not, no grade shown on it.
Just one question.
Go for it.
So when we got all the comments from Goral Palmer, it seems like there's a number that seemed like they might not be resolved. And then I think I heard you say that after it goes to DEP, then you'll take a look at whether or not those need to be addressed.
Yes, because the ones that deal with the buffers.
Right, and so.
Because that is, the language that Goral Palmer is reviewing should be the same language as the DEP will be reviewing. We kind of don't exactly agree one hundred percent with Goral Palmer's comments and we'd like to see the feedback from the DEP before we respond to the town.
Sure, so does part of the question have to do with the location of these building envelopes?
Part of it does. And under, when you do phosphorus standards, you look at the entirety of the property for your phosphorus allocation. You do not have to necessarily treat the structures. You have to treat the overall. And what DEP typically wants treated first and foremost are the private roads. So that's why you see those buffer strips against the road.
So.
We could do, we're not, we could put in drip edges on the homes. There's moderate treatment for that. But we have met, what I'd like to say is we've met the phosphorus standards doing with what we've met, which is the standard.
So if that is a little bit of an issue and the size of the lot or the setbacks are an issue, would it make sense to designate a building envelope?
Well, they're on there.
Well, I know that they're on there, but it doesn't seem.
Yeah, we'd walk where they actually plan on putting a home, some kind of, and I agree with that. But I think we'd like to have some interpretation on where we measure the two hundred feet. I don't know if that's through someone at the town or whether that's a legal opinion or, because it does make a difference in the value of a lot.
Do we have the ability to alter that? I mean, if it was an existing building within shoreline zone, we can make determinations as to whether they've met the setbacks the best possible way. This is a brand new.
New building has to be a hundred feet off the water, if that's true.
Right.
We, the board cannot grant any waivers to dimensional standards, to setbacks.
So my understanding on shoreline zoning, the new home, it has to be one hundred feet back. It's not anything to the greatest extent practical, has to be outside the one hundred foot setback, which is what we've shown. But then we get into this lot width.
Talking about dimensional standards, whether we had the right to adjust those any. I don't think we do.
No.
We'd have to go to the ZBA or.
Yeah, you'd have to plead a hardship.
And I don't know how you prove that.
You couldn't, but I guess that's where the interpretation of where's lot width determined. And if we need something in writing from JP or from legal counsel, then I think that would be helpful. And to your point, Mrs. Beagle, I think it would make sense then to, once we get that, to put in a useful envelope where they anticipate these homes to go. So everybody's clear about that. I think the homeowners that buy the lot would want to know what they have for a window as well.
So right now, are we mostly concerned about the blue lot?
No, both of them. Because if you change it to this little pink slot that Jim has, then we infringe on the width on the lot too?
Yes.
Now, the building could go back further from the lake.
It could. And we, again, we are just anticipating that, given that these are lakefront water properties, that people are going to want to be as close to the water as possible. But that does not mean that somebody couldn't put a house further back. We just don't know where the home's going. The developer's not building these homes, they're selling these lots.
There's no question that it has to be two hundred feet at that hundred foot line.
Right.
As you parallel with the shore as best we can.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Then the question comes with the lot width definition.
Where is that measured from?
So are we looking at this bump-out scenario, or that one up there?
We submitted that one up there, but talking with my clients, they'd like to know, you know, based on our conversation with J P, with their, could there be an opportunity to do the bump-out? Twenty, it's basically twenty-five foot width.
The answer to that is, this board cannot tell you. That, the board by law cannot grant changes to dimensional requirements, like that is a waiver situation with the Z B A.
But is it a waiver, are you saying then, the lot width, how do we measure, where do we measure the lot width then?
That is a call by ordinance of the code enforcement officer, and J P is, you're gonna have to pin him down to do his job and make that determination, as is the, what he is charged to do by the ordinance.
I mean, if you took the two hundred foot widths, at the hundred foot setback, and the building on Lot Two moved back fifty feet, you might be able to do some wiggling around with the property lines, as long as you had two hundred feet of width at the back of the building, closest to the right-of-way.
Yeah, 'cause if you look, that you have, shown the, the building setback from the right-of-way. So again, do you measure lot width in this direction because of the frontage, or is it this direction?
Code book doesn't say. I think you're right, it's, it's code enforcement officer to determine where that, how this is determined, but. And lot width is usually the width of the lot, but we're usually not determining that from two, two perspectives, water and access driveway, that you're driving on.
Right, and typically, your lot width is measured from parallel to the road.
Right. And if you take that, you've got eight hundred feet?
Right.
No, not that much, but four, six, yeah, almost eight hundred feet. This is interesting, we haven't run across this one yet.
'Cause we haven't had new homes.
No, this is the first new one on the water.
They've all been replacements.
Scott, by, by our ordinance, that is a C E O call.
C E O is charged with interpretation of the ordinance, and I certainly would lean on him for that, yes. And if he wants to then consult town attorney in making his determination, and then if we need to go and change this to be more clear, we'll work on that, but I would lean, especially for dimensional standard things like this, I would definitely, I don't think this board should be making that determination.
I'm not sure we can.
Exactly.
Usually, a lot width is measured from your front yard setback.
I didn't say that, though.
No.
Unfortunately, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't say that, but it's, it's very loose interpretation.
Very interesting.
So, would it be who of us then, Scott, maybe you and I, to meet with J P and try to sit down in person and go through this scenario?
Depends how much your client wants to change what they have, what you have submitted.
I think we just need his interpretation of where he would measure lot frontage, not lake frontage, but lot frontage.
The width in particular, where is he gonna get the width from?
Right.
I personally, I mean, it's not really my decision, but I think, um, I think you can't have it both ways, you can't have waterfront be your frontage, and then say, oh, I wanna have it be the road instead, it's good, you know? But anyway, it's not my call.
And I don't know which one, which one has the overriding.
Very unique.
Yeah, it's very unique, and I think everybody's been scratching their head, and, you know, we're just trying to make these the most presentable lots for, 'cause these are gonna be very expensive lots. Luckily, Lot One, we know.
My, my question also, Scott, are these not considered spaghetti lots because they're long and narrow?
They do not meet the five to one ratio, we did, we did review that already, that's why we ended up with the third lot, because they would've been, if there'd been two lots, they would've been spaghetti lots.
Thank you for that.
Now, how does the new rule and regulation, can we come in there and put a triplex on the back of each one of these shore lots now?
No.
Because it's in Shoreland zoning, it's exempt?
Because it's not in a growth area, and it is not served by public utilities.
Understood, just wanted to check that. I don't think we're gonna resolve that, that lot width for this board, so I think we can move on. Discuss the request for waiver.
I didn't have any other questions.
What time do you wanna do the public hearing, Charlie?
Uh, we're gonna do that next, I think, and then we'll discuss the waiver and stuff, but I was just saying, we can't resolve that, so we oughta move forward. Is there a motion to open this to the public?
I'll make that motion.
And then double nays, what are you gonna, second it?
Yeah, I'll second, whatever.
Oh, I'd second. Anyone from the public like to speak?
If you do, please go to the podium and state your name and address.
Hello. Hello, my name's Leanne Van Ada, I live at thirty-three Harseide Road in Standish, Maine, and I wanna say thank you. And since he presented two new maps or informational, and I'm just wondering if the public can also have copies of that too, that he presented to the board, and I saw that somebody did get a copy of that, so I would like to ask.
I will submit those to town, if I have a copy of that.
Thank you, thank you very much, I really appreciate that, and the words that I kept hearing come up were convoluted, somebody couldn't make the decision, we're not really sure, we don't really know. I think this should be tabled, and if you do have a meeting between the builder and the town and spago technics, I think that should be open to the public. I do not think that should be a private meeting to finagle the lot lines, so if that does happen, could that please be open as a public meeting, so people can hear what the information is going to be said between spago technics, the builder, and the Standish planning board, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close.
I'll second.
The move and seconded to close the public hearing, further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay. Relative to the meeting with the code enforcement officer, that's unusual, I mean, that's his jurisdiction, right? I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I think what I would like to propose is, whatever, and I don't wanna have a large meeting with the code officer, I'd like to have it between planner, us, and the code officer, but whatever is determined, I would like it to be put in writing, so that it would be available to the public to see, but I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for the public
That makes sense.
chiming in on a private conversation with the code officer, we're not trying to break any rules or anything, but whatever his determination would be, we would like to have it in writing, so it would be presented to you, and so it would be available for the public, so it's fully transparent.
And would Gorel Palmer review that also, again?
I mean, they don't typically review ordinance language, they're, they're doing engineering, if we feel necessary, we're gonna have town attorney look it over.
Okay.
Well, can we just have that be part of?
A condition.
A condition, that the town attorney does look it over?
I mean, I think we can, we can recommend that J P do that, and we'll talk to him tomorrow, or, yeah.
I, I think that that is a pretty important element in this.
Well, this, this is gonna help J P also, if there are other new homes built, he might not have seen one ever too, so, like this. We have it, so.
We have no problems about that at all, I think it makes some sense to, just to make it very clear, that, you know, there is a legal interpretation, and it helps J P, it helps us, helps you, so. I can't make that decision, obviously, that's up to the town.
Is that a motion to have the?
Yes.
Town attorney, review that?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
The move and seconded to have the town attorney review the language of the ordinance, to determine where we measure the width, is that the? I think that's what I heard you say.
Yes.
Indirectly, but I think that's what you said.
Thank you, Charlie.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay, so we'll have that looked at, see if they can come up with a definition of how we do that.
Thank you.
On the private ways, they get, they get inspected during construction by the public works director, right? You know, with the town engineer, one of them.
Yeah, in, yeah, the public works director with the assistance of town engineer.
Though we're not gonna maintain them, take care of them, just basically for the protection of the public.
Yeah, we make sure that they are built to the standards required by the ordinance.
All right, so.
I mean, if you're not, I guess it's, it's up to you, you can take a vote on that if you want, um, if we're tabling, no, on the waiver, or if you just wanna, if you're tabling this for preliminary, till we have a decision on lot width, then.
I was just thinking, as far as the, the waiver on the private ways, that would give them something to move forward, knowing that it either is gonna be acceptable or non-acceptable.
That would be helpful, thank you.
So, a recommended motion would be moved at the requirement of Section one eighty-one ninety-seven C, that frontage and access may not be provided over private ways, be waived to allow, under Section one eighty-one oh seven B, on the grounds that there is lack of connective, lack of connecting facilities adjacent to, in proximity to the proposed subdivision. So this is all deals with the, the change in that short section of Westerly Way, and the gray section?
So this is for the, the gray section, that, for the new road, because our subdivision regulations require that the new lots get their frontage on a new road built to public standards, and that that road cannot be a private road.
Yeah.
We are giving them a waiver that says this can be a private road, and that it can be built to the standards of a two to five unit private way.
Which is what the back road cross-section is, that's in the, which we're gonna change the name on, so we understand what it is.
Well, if, if the purpose of that is to give frontage, you have to have a lot have frontage on the private way, it seems like that answers the question we were looking for.
Well, the.
Yeah, so frontage, we've got, that is settled, and that is clearly defined, it's the lot width, is the lot width.
Which way do we measure it?
Perpendicular or horizontal? It is that, the, there's a requirement for the lot width at the hundred feet, in our ordinance, there's a requirement for lot width at the building closest to the right-of-way, it is not clear which direction, if it has to be parallel to frontage or not, that's, that's the question.
Yeah, so why would Shoreland be over, I mean, Shoreland is indefinite, you can't ignore that that's Shoreland, wouldn't that take precedence?
So there, there are two separate requirements that are not, I mean, if this road, if this lot had a road that went along the front like you normally would expect, and you have a shore frontage, and you have a road frontage, your lot frontager would be on the road, your shore frontage would be on the shore, you'd measure a lot width at the, wherever the building is located, parallel to that frontage on the road, and you would also have to maintain your lot width at the shoreline, within a hundred feet, they're separate requirements. It happens that those separate requirements are the same distance, but they are not, they didn't have to be, and they're separate measurements taken at separate places on the lot, so that it can be done. They don't have to be the same, and they don't necessarily have to follow the same rules of orientation.
Orientation, yeah. If that right-of-way went straight across the lot where the buffer is.
Right, that, then it would be easy.
We'd have a straight shot, we'd know where the.
Correct, yeah. And that works for the blue lot, which is like getting its frontage along that, the thin end of the lot, so.
But we had to turn the right-of-way to get frontage for the pink lot.
Since the front, yeah, exactly, since the front, the frontage is turned, does that change the orientation of the width?
You may need that plan. So you know what, we're talking about blue lots, pink lots.
It's Lot Two, Lot Two is the pink lot.
All right, but that's gonna get resolved, so the question is, do we wanna give them a waiver? Which will allow them to build a private way, not to town standards of twenty-two feet plus shoulders.
To town standards, but to the private way standards, not to the, the public road standards as required by subdivision.
What thoughts? Anybody, any thoughts on that?
What are the private way standards, is essentially, is a request to not pave the, the road?
Yeah, so the private way would not have to be paved, it would be sixteen feet of roadway width, you can get, and then there's construction standards, fifteen inches of gra, subsurface gravel, two inches of wire and gravel.
Can't speak for the owners, but I do think, initially, they're gonna leave it gravel, but they may pave it soon after, which, from an impervious standpoint, makes no difference whether it's gravel or paved, but I do think long-term, there could be a plan to pave that, but for approval purposes, they just want gravel.
Doesn't affect runoff or stormwater, 'cause they look at it the same way, right?
I think D E P probably would approve it with pavement over gravel, 'cause gravel moves easier than.
Right.
Yeah, the, the primary issue is the width, right then.
Okay.
I think that everyone's concerned about.
Yeah, the depths are the same, right? Eighteen inches of base gravel, and three inches of wear surface, or something like that.
Pretty close to the same.
The private way is fifteen-two, I don't have the public one, might have to flip through to find out.
I think the public one may be deeper.
I got the public one right here.
Public is twenty? Twenty-four inches of aggregate subbase, and three inches of crushed. Talk of that, so we, it lowers the subbase.
Yeah.
I think the reason for that would be, there's less traffic on a private road than there would be on a public road, primarily, you don't have the same weight pounding on it on a daily basis.
In general, Charlie, I'm fine with the waiver, for the interior road requirement, I have no problem with it.
I mean, this piece is not gonna be for the subdivide, which is the question I asked earlier about it, because it's not in the appropriate zone.
I mean, certainly doesn't have, certainly couldn't be done under current or expected ordinance changes, and if the board would like to include a condition that it, any future subdivision has to come back to this board, then that would, if things did change, it would have to come back here for your review.
It would anyway, once it's a subdivision, not only that, we'd have to come back through site location as well.
Makes it nice and clear, to put it right on the plan.
Makes it a very big hassle to come back again.
Yeah.
I think, you know, with the limited traffic on this road, and having the fire department review, and if they're all set, that it makes sense to, to waive it, from my perspective.
Yeah, I don't see any issues myself with it. I'll make the motion then, as presented by staff.
I'll second it.
Move and second to move that the requirement for subsection one eighty-one ninety-seven C, that the frontage and access may not be provided over private ways, be waived to allow that the frontage and access may not be provided over private ways be waived to allow under section one eighty-one, one oh seven B, on the grounds that there is the lack of connecting facilities adjacent to the pro- or in proximity to the proposed subdivision. Any further discussion by the board? See none, all those in favor? Very good. I think we're still a ways before we have, we gotta figure out what the lot widths and whether you can move those lot lines and how that affects it.
I think that's up to the applicant, if they would, if they presented us a plan that I think is approvable. If they want the second plan they presented us, then I think they would be asking you to wait on a decision, yes.
I think either way.
We could give them preliminary and then they could make the changes, right?
And I would make, yeah, I would make it clear you're giving them preliminary on the submitted plan, not on the one given to you tonight, until we know better, but if you think that you're gonna be changing it, that's the board. I'd.
Well, your condition number seven, similar to what you're talking about, I'd almost just say these, these lots may not be further subdivided or developed without approval by the planning board. Is that too much?
Uh, we're gonna work on that when we get to final, if, if an exact wording of that. I think it might be warranted to make sure that.
Tweaked that a little bit, but not much.
Adding dwelling units, but we wanna make sure we're also not stepping on any legal issues. We gotta make sure it's clear that that doesn't apply to accessory dwelling units and things like that, so we can't restrict those.
Under three, I think we need to just amend that and say five-inch rebaths is acceptable alternative to the two-foot, one-inch diameter iron pipes that are elsewhere in the ordinance, which virtually nobody uses, 'cause they use the caps on the rebaths now. That goes back to the days of old. Yes, Carolyn?
Why, why would we do preliminary when we don't have a clear picture of exactly what's happening?
We don't have to, I was just bringing it up as a, it is an option. We don't have to do that.
I was just wondering if there was, uh, some valid reasons to do that, that I'm not seeing.
I think the only reason would be is if they needed preliminary approval and they had asked for it relative to if DEP wanted to see it or.
Based on what we had prior to this meeting, you could grant preliminary on that plan.
Right.
You can't, so I don't, it's whether you wanna grant it on that plan and they come back requesting.
Changes.
Changes for final, or if they prefer to just have that settled at this stage, in which case we can't, we should wait until they've fully explored that.
Can they request preliminary and final approval in the same meeting, or would they have to do two meetings?
If they've got everything in hand, um, I think, I don't know where your timeline is with DEP.
It's amendment, so there is no timeline. That's the problem, when you do an amendment with DEP, there's no jurisdictional timeline. It could be a month, it could be a year. We hope it's in the middle.
So they, they might wanna come in for preliminary before they hear back from DEP, but if they were to get it back in the short term, yes, they could, you could, because we had everything.
Typically, we do get the engineering review comments before we get the rest of the analyst's comments, so we are hopeful to see those engineering comments in the next month or so. Which is primarily what I'm waiting for before I reply to the stormwater recommendations from the Goral Palmer. But I, again, if we were able to get an interpretation from legal, from the code officer, and there is a potential that we get engineering comments that we can address Goral Palmer's, then we may request to do preliminary and final in one night at that time. I think it just makes sense, given that I know it's my clients' wish to get the bottom of that lot three a little wider for a better footprint. I don't think we gain anything by necessarily making a preliminary approval. I just don't know where it puts us, 'cause we may go backwards if we change it.
Yeah.
But I think it just makes sense at this point to, we've get, we've got the waiver, appreciative of that. I think it just makes sense to get true interpretation so we can move.
Now you can move forward with the road.
Correct.
Design.
Yep.
The other thing I had a question on, which I just saw my last note, was basement drains. Ultimately, they're all gonna be heading for the lake. Is there any issues with any of those? Water table, if I'm not mistaken, is within three feet.
Yeah, typically, um, if we, people do put basement drains in on lakefront properties. If they go closer than twenty-five feet, they gotta get an NRPA, but if they go, usually it's a permit by rule for that soil disturbance for those drains.
Based on the contours, you're gonna see daylight before you get to twenty-five feet.
Yeah, probably they'll have.
No special requirements on that, I don't think, are there?
Most likely, if there is a high water table, they'll probably have to have pumps.
Dropping off pretty good going down to the lake.
You do, but I don't know if we've got. Yeah, we'll take a look at, we'll, we'll see how far we have to chase it. If you'd like to see those, we can show those.
I was just curious as to whether it would affect storm drainage, that's all I was.
It's a non-point source, so it's.
Okay. It's the board's.
Motion to table?
My two cents is, is the motion to table, just.
Got a second then to Andrew's motion?
I guess, I just second Andrew's motion.
Okay, we have a motion to table? Any discuss, further discussion by the board?
Do we need to put a timeline or a date to the table?
Timeline until you get it resolved?
Well, obviously, we'd like to get together with JP as soon as possible, but it is getting Christmas time and busy, so we'll do our best to get back here as soon as we can, but in the next month?
Yeah, I don't think it'll be this year.
I'd like to try to come back in January if possible.
I mean, if you wanna say, you know, later than February, that gives us a little time just in case things drag on, but keeps us moving.
The issue would be the attorney's opinion.
Hopefully, it wouldn't take that long. Usually, they're pretty responsive, okay?
Better than the DEP.
Not going there.
So, yeah, table until February?
You gonna have it February on there?
No later than, that way if we are ready for January, February.
That works.
Good with that, Frank?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Any further discussion? See none, all those in favor? Unanimous, very good.
Thank you for your time.
Just for the public, if anyone's interested in updates in between, just reach out to me. Scott Hastings, you can find my number, email on the website, and, uh, get you anything you need.
Item on the agenda, Pine Tree Estates, five-eighty Ospey Trail West. Map five-six seventy-five lots thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-eight and fifteen, site plan, should it say site plan slash subdivision? We're doing both, right?
Yeah, yeah, it should be both.
Application for ninety-seven new homes. Jason, it's all yours.
Hello, everybody, glad to see you all again. Uh, yeah, so Jason Baffiotis with Atlantic Resource Consultants slash Fernandez, uh, here with the whole team again. Uh, we got Atwell and the applicant, RHP Properties with us, as well as legal counsel and my right-hand man, Lucian, for any kind of natural resource questions. So we, you'll remember, we did the site walk in the rain, and I know Carolyn, you got there a little late and it was dark and dreary.
It was glorious when I was walking, I like to say.
Yeah, Carolyn brought the sunlight.
Yeah, yeah, no, that was, that was good timing for. And you'll remember, we just, you know, kinda looked at the, the site in general, a number, some of you have been there before anyway in a previous site walk. And the, the expansion is primarily tucked, you know, no one's gonna see, and that isn't in the park, isn't gonna really understand that this expansion is happening. But, uh, figured we'd come back in, uh, we did do a response to comments, uh, for Goral Palmer comments, um, on the last submittal, um, and then there were a number of comments, and we whittled that right down to a page and a half, which we actually re responded to, um, it was, we got it done at the, right before Thanksgiving, so we just sent that over to let Goral Palmer take a look at it. All those comments were very technical and, um, and minor in nature. And we did, uh, you might have a copy of our, actually, no, you didn't have the paper copies yet. Um, so we got those in, but we just have a little quick overview to remind you of the stuff we're talking about here. So if you wanna hit the next slide. So there are, uh, some discussion items on septic, uh, in relation to where the well source was and all those things. So if you look at this slide, the, uh, the red stars, all on the, there's one primary large engineered septic system which gets state review, as well as it's getting peer reviewed, uh, through, uh, Flycatcher, uh, through Goral Palmer, as, from the town's perspective. But the state-reviewed septic system, which is over two thousand gallons per day, is the one that's in the, what we call the eastern expansion. Um, and so that's that lone star, uh, out on the big loop. And then all the other stars up against the, uh, expansion where we're kind of expanding in the existing area, those are all minor systems, so those would be systems typically would be big enough for a house. There's two to three, sometimes four units, so up to ten, twelve bedrooms going into each of those. Those systems typically just get coenforcement review, uh, that's normally a, uh, just put it in when you get your building permit. We have submitted all those forms in, and those will get a review from Flycatcher as well, just a extra set of eyes going over those. And then the water source is the blue star up by Route twenty-five. And that is the subject of, been a lot of discussion, I think, over the years, uh, water supply. And if we hit the next slide, Scott, we'll go over that a little bit. Um, oops, here's the permitting update, sorry, I forgot this one was in here. This is just a list of, uh, all the things that we've been doing. Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, that we've been there a couple of times. Uh, Planning Board, we came in on nine fifteen twenty-five, um, did the meeting, site walk, comments, all the stuff we just talked about, so we can go to the next slide. Here we go, water system design. So, uh, we did talk about we were doing improvements out there. We have, uh, figured out what those improvements are going to be with our subcontracting engineering, uh, team, which primarily does all private water sources. So we're putting in a thirty thousand gallon atmospheric storage tank. And typically what those are is they provide storage, um, which is controlled, has a controlled pressure comes in the line, so the pump that's out there now is kind of a high-end or, or a high-power pump that doesn't have a variable, uh, motor to it, I guess you'd say. So when demand is good, that pump works good, that pump works fine. When demand is low, that pump's just hammering that water into the line. So what this tank is, it provides that buffer between the pumping, and we're upgrading the pumps anyway, but provides a buffer between the pump and the gravity storage that goes through the line. So it's, it's better capacity, it's more consistent, and it's a constant pressure in the system, which will actually help future water line breaks, um, 'cause we're not getting that water hammer or that pump turning on and shaking those lines. So, next slide. And then going over the septic design again, uh, the, I will mention the engineered system, which is the, the two, the greater than two thousand gallons per day. It actually has an oxidizing, oxidizing pretreatment system, it's basically a bubbler. So what that does is, because that was in an area we were trying to preserve, uh, it was a wildlife corridor back there, we were reduced the footprint of that system by fifty percent. So, uh, we're not building this giant septic field, we've cut that down by fifty percent. And then that, also that helps with the water quality that actually, it gets oxidized before it even goes into the distribution system, so that just helps the breakdown even better. Oh, next slide, sorry. Sorry, gave you the big deer eyes there. Uh, so traffic, um, number of things, so traffic is kind of an interesting one. It is a high-mobility corridor and we don't meet the permit requirements for a traffic movement permit. So a traffic movement permit is a hundred peak hour trips, we don't come close to that, I think we're sixty-seven somewhere out there. But we do, however, in a traffic analysis, once we get close to full capacity of the expansion, we would need a left-hand turn lane warrant, we meet that warrant. So that actually is a process in which we have to come up with those plans and submit those as we would do, uh, we're amending our entrance permit. And the town actually does get invited in part, as part of this process, because the, it would be the public works director and, uh, planning, should Scott, uh, wish to, uh, attend these meetings. Basically, you just get looped in on the emails, uh, because it's in the compact zone. So, uh, DOT, where it's a high-mobility corridor, takes all review of that item. And so we're working with, uh, DOT now on what that left-hand turn lane will look like. It's only got an eighty-five foot taper, uh, eighty-five foot queuing length, um, going into the primary sec- section. So they tie that to occupancy, so typically in these.
Which entrance is that, Jason?
So it's the, the primary entrance, it's the Deer Hill entrance.
Okay.
So this typically, what they'll probably do is give us two to three years to do that based on the proposed build-out. Um, and that will, all the town sort of gets notified through that process, but you don't actually have any formal review as a municipality as part of that, you're just kind of courtesy included. So, uh, I suspect that, that entrance will get constructed, um, at some point in the fall, um, after we get going. And I don't know how the board feels about, um, 'cause it's not actually a permit we need to get, it's just a, a driveway alteration permit, so, um, there's no real review to that. It's just the DOT looks at it and then, um, we tell them we need a left-hand turn lane, they say, okay, show us the design, and then it's a developer agreement, uh, it gets installed within two to three years. So, if anyone has any more specific questions about that, I can answer that. Uh, next slide. And then the Josie's Brook setback, we had discussions of that. We, we have a hundred and twenty-five foot undisturbed setback measured from the high water mark of Josie's Brook, associated wetlands, um, on each side, we're actually only building on one side. The high, because those wetlands, some of those are not actually hydraulically connected. So we're gonna show the, the setback from the hundred-year flood elevation line, um, on those wetlands, on the plans, uh, and that basically, that's from the edge of the brook. I mean, we're, we're talking like two hundred, two hundred fifty feet in some areas. Next slide, Scott. And that is it? Kind of muddled through that, so any questions you have on the resubmittal or other items, more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Do you wanna add anything, Scott?
He covered most of the, the new things, we did, uh, get all those septic designs and they are at the engineer being reviewed. We don't have that review back like we do the Goral Palmer's review, so we don't, we don't know the results of that yet, but they're, they're working on it. And I don't have any known issues, and like you said, those will also be reviewed by the state. Don't have any new comments from, uh, Public Works or Public Safety, they still are largely fine with this. Public Works is very interested in what is happening with the entrance and the turn lane. Because it's in the compact zone, while it's a DOT road and we don't get a lot of say in construction, we do handle maintenance and paving and winter stuff. We are gonna be interested in the exact timeline for that, because I believe it was paved recently and there is a five-year moratorium on digging up the pavement that we've just put down. So we're gonna have to work with Public Works on how to get through that, depending on the timeline, once we know exactly what that is. But again, that is, as he said, a, a state issue that we don't really get a lot of say in. I think we're gonna, by the time we get to final, we're gonna want some communication from them to see where we're at on exactly what the timeline is, so we can make sure that our approval reflects what you're gonna be doing with them. But that's just a coordination issue more than a, a real review issue. But otherwise, I think we're, we're moving right along through this. It's mostly down to getting those engineering comments com- fully addressed and we'll certainly are getting close there. Making sure the septic engineering comes back and addressing any of those comments, and I think we'll be in, in good shape.
I have a question, Charlie.
Okay, great.
Where did you guys leave off with the water supply?
Oh, as opposed to that, so we don't need a, there's no new well, we're using the existing, sorry, I should've mentioned that. Glad you asked. Uh, yeah, so the, there's plenty of water and capacity in those wells and we have years and years of data. They've actually never had a cup, a water, uh, capacity issue, even through all the droughts and everything, that, that, those, that supply is pretty.
You have two wells, correct? How many wells are you planning to have? Two?
Yeah, there's two, there's two wells really close by, which feed into one pump, yeah, up at the pump house, yeah.
And, and that's what you're going with?
Yes.
Is that okay? And the capacity's there, or you have the data?
Yep.
To show the capacities there? Okay?
Well, it looked like in our packet you were using New Hampshire rules.
Yeah, I had a question about that.
Yeah, I had a question about that.
Yeah, so I actually don't think Maine has rules for storage. So the, the company that's doing the engineering, um, is based in New Hampshire. Um, so the main drinking water program, uh, is basic, is, is in charge of the, the wells. Um, and their engineering department will look at that when we go to put in. So taking more water or increasing demand on existing wells, um, actually doesn't get a whole lot of review in Maine. You just basically send them the engineering upgrades when, when you're ready to go and they'll, they'll do a quick review. And that comes part of the reporting, so we report every month on usage and the, and the testing data. So, um, I'll have them, uh, update that, uh, Horizon's engineering, I believe, did that work. So we'll, we'll try to figure out what, what references to New Hampshire, I think they were just using it as a sizing guideline.
I have a question about the water. Um, do you know of any leaks in the current system that would be happening continuously?
So I might have to kick it over, but we're not, my understanding, we're not aware of any kind of leaks that are out there that haven't been fixed. Sometimes there's breaks during construction like we talked about.
Right.
You have, you have some excavation and you pull a saddle or something like that, but there are no, no leaks, uh, and none of the, uh, the water usage data would indicate that there's a leak.
Right, because that would, that would really skew the, it would, it would go way up.
Exactly.
Uh, I don't know if we want to stay on the water topic or not, but I have other questions too. Okay. Uh, the road closure, um, it looked like there were residences that were not part of the park that use that entrance? So I'm not so sure why we could close that.
Obby Lane, no, so those are all park residences. So the only residences that aren't, um, part of the park are Rosita Drive. So there, there are some houses on the front of the park, uh, that have their own driveways, but I think- Obby Lane is-
There was-
Well, actually-
There was one, two, three, there's one owned by Pine Tree Estates, but the first three aren't in the park.
There you go, Ferente and-
Twenty, twenty-two seven, twenty-two seven B.
Um, I'll take you one second. Yeah, no problem.
You're looking at sheet R one, right?
Yes, yep. And you're wanting to close that for the left-hand turn lane, right? That, that's the, I, I, I get that, but I'm also wondering if that can happen with that not being a park.
Yeah, so we, so the park owns the road and maintains the road.
Yeah.
It could be that those houses could put their own driveways. Out, but one of them already has their own driveway.
Yeah, one couldn't go out to twenty-five. The one already does, it's showing that it does, and then the other, so I guess two don't currently. And yes, they have access through, I guess they have access through the park infrastructure. Uh, either way they go, but, um, that was a question that I had, can that be closed? For that.
Without having the deeds, I had to tell.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to-
Yeah, yeah. Um, and, and talking about like a Butters and stuff, why are the, why is the park not labeled out as a Butters? To the project? Like, the not, the non-Pine Tree Estates lots are, but the Pine Tree Estate lots aren't listed? I, I didn't know if that was-
Oh, so they got notifications, so the, you're talking about the units within the park itself?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so they're, they're included in our Butters list of notifications.
Okay, good. Uh, because I didn't know if that fed from this only, like, and, you know, they two were different, so.
Yep.
Um, and then, uh, for, so how far does that compact zone go? Does it go to Sunset or right around, I, I, I couldn't picture where it went.
It was up to the park, isn't it?
I think it goes all the way up to the next road that goes to the left, and I think after that, the compact zone ends.
I had this up, but then my computer crashed before we got here, so.
Okay. Um, I was, I was wondering if the forty mile an hour zone from the one thirteen side could be extended for the left-hand turn lane? Um, because it's fifty?
That's DOT's issue, and that'll be part of their conversations with, about the turn lane.
Yeah.
I don't, we don't have a lot of control over that.
Yeah, so there was, there was just a high-speed crash right at Deer Hill, um, very recently, very bad one. Um, and at lower speed. I, I really didn't get the crash data for the roundabout. I almost wanted to see like the crash data in front of the park.
I believe that was submitted as part of the other, other packets.
Yeah.
They asked for additional data for the roundabout and that's why we got it this time.
So, yeah, I would love to explore that forty mile an hour zone.
A quick comment on that, so.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
DOT is very funny about changing the speed limits up there.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and so.
But I, I was just doing some napkin math and I probably am not super great at that. But, um, with the current expansion in full, this is gonna be the highest density part of Standish, are, pretty much already is. Um, but, you know, you could have between eight hundred and a thousand people living there, it depends on how many people live in each unit, but, um, you know, that's, that's a lot going out of a few entrances, uh, for sure. Um, so I think that would definitely trigger something. Uh, moving on, uh, it mentioned, uh, how does the fifty-five plus work with the deed restrictions? Could you talk about what that entails, how does that work when someone purchases a property and how does that stay and all that stuff?
The fifty-five plus is, uh, we kept, we keep records on, I'm Joel Brown, I'm from RHP Properties. We keep records on all residents that are over fifty-five, they have to meet the requirement. Occupants need to meet the requirement, that is kept. Residents are, are not admitted to the park if they don't meet that requirement. Their occupants have a temporary, they may be there for a couple of months, they have to register.
Yep.
But it, it, it's, uh, we do this at a lot of our communities. Uh, it's administered rigorously, uh, and records are kept to that.
So the person purchasing the property has to be the one living there?
Person purchasing, living, they all have to meet the requirement.
And they can have other people living with them, but they have to be the person?
There's, there's very specific rules about who living there.
Mm-hmm.
Have to be over fifty-five as well.
Okay.
Um, that the, we've talked about this before, I think maybe in this forum, I'm not sure, but there's a temporary, there's a temporary situation if, for example, uh, grandkids come to live there. They're with their grandparents, I think there was some objection that that would prevent people from having grandkids there, but nevertheless, it's very, uh, specific as to who's been with there.
Well, and there's, there's probably a difference between temporary and impermanent, right, too, right? Um, last question I think I had for now, unless I remember. Uh, it mentioned discussing the order of construction and phasing. So all of the fifty-five plus can be constructed all at the same time? And then from there, where would it go?
So your growth management ordinance would require any non-fifty-five and older housing be constructed, and I believe that's three per?
Five.
Five, five per year.
Per year.
Um, and then the other ones are, feel as you, as you go.
And Scott, is it twenty-five in all of the growth area per year? So that five would be part of the twenty-five?
So in the rural area, there is a five per subdivision and then there's a cap for total in the rural area.
Yes.
So.
Do we know how?
First come, first served basis. Up until this time, we have not yet had to turn anyone away. I do see that being more competitive in coming years.
And, and first come, first served, would they line up at the door? Or would it be based on approval or how, how would first come, first served?
It's based on when they submit building permits and you'd have to talk to JP about whether he accepts a line ahead of the day or if he waits for them to line up at the door, I don't, I'm not sure how he, again, we have yet to actually get to the point where we have turned away people because of that, so it is somewhat untested, but it is explicitly first come, first served, so that's the best I can say.
So you were, I think we had to discuss last time, uh, the first phase probably being the, we need names for these places, like the back lot or like, um, uh, the first phase being not the circle over at Deer Hill, right? So then the circle, that would be like five a year? Is that po- possible, like to physically construct that in five lots per year?
I think you guys might want to talk, uh, have you discussed, uh, phasing or are you going all, building all infrastructure at once?
Gotcha.
So they're gonna build everything they need to build at once?
Yep.
Up front and then?
Occupancy is slow.
Like occupancy will be whatever the market demands, right? And so whether they market heavy on the fifty-five and older, they don't need a growth management permit for that, they'll just fill them as they can.
And you, and you could do the fifty-five plus and the five lots simultaneously, right? So you could kind of? Gotcha.
Well, I'd kind of like to piggyback off, off Andrew's comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I mean, one of the things we are supposed to be considering is how this whole project conforms to the comprehensive plan. And I find it interesting that this is the rural district that is supposed to have the slowest growth and the, um, lowest density. And yet Andrew just pointed out that with this development, that makes it the most dense. It's not in a growth area, it's not even in a transitional growth area, it is in the rural area, the lowest growth. And I understand the appeals board said they can have an expansion, but to expand at ninety-three units in the lowest growth part of town just astounds me. And, and so I'm looking at some of the notes that, that we received. And it says the comprehensive plan sets goals for developing diverse housing types and promoting affordable and workforce housing. So, you know, that, so I feel that's in keeping with the plan despite being a large development and an area not designed as a growth area. So I, I read that and I said, all right, let's look up affordable housing. Well, we have a definition for that in our ordinance that refers to a state statute. And the state statute requires that you have constraints and, um, a whole plan put in place that's meant with your municipality so that it is defined as affordability. There's a whole thing that has to be in place, that's not in place with this, with this project. And then we keep talking about the fifty-five and older, well, again, that's not in a growth area. So I'm not really sure what is, and maybe you can help me find it, Scott, that's in our ordinance that says that fifty-five and older just gets a pass that can all be built right away, because it's not our elderly housing definition.
So in the growth management ordinance, um, which is article thirty-nine of the, maybe if exemptions to the growth management ordinance. So one eighty-one, one forty-one is exemptions and one of those, um, subsection B is dwelling units which are age restricted to persons fifty-five years and older.
So can you read that section to me, because the section I saw-
Dwelling units, so part six, which is the growth management origin- ordinance shall not apply to the following. And then point B is dwelling units constructed by the York and Cumberland Housing Authority, an agency of the state or federal government or a private developer or contractor with a continuing age restriction of persons fifty-five years of age or older. And then any conversion of these units eliminating the age restriction would require a growth permit.
So that's anywhere in any zone?
Correct.
Well, I, that, that in the case, um, I just, I just don't see how in good conscience we can have that large of an expansion uh, in, um, the rural, in the rural zone when we are trying to comply with the comprehensive plan. We just did a whole new plan, you know, we put all this emphasis on planning, 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 and then we don't follow it.
But I will note, all very pertinent and good comments, but this type of housing is not actually allowed in your growth zones. I think your manufactured housing overlay zones are all in the rural zone.
I mean, we would allow, we would allow this in the Standish Corner in so much that you can do lot sizes down to this size, like it would not necessarily be, we would allow density this high in the Standish Corner zone.
But not the specific type of housing.
You could build this type of housing there in that there is nothing that says you can't.
Yeah, and-
Now, it's not explicitly the mobile home park use, but you could lay out development like this in that zone and it would work.
And in the plan, you know, we did, it does say you can continue to allow mobile home parks in those portions of the resident, residential district within designated growth and transitional areas designed for future land use. Um, but, but this isn't even a transitional use, I mean, a transitional growth area.
Carol, is that the new plan?
This is, I couldn't find the new one online.
All right, cause, well, it says the, we don't have transitional growth areas anymore, uh, uh, so. It is not in a growth area, though we have identified the corridor here in front of the park as a, an area of interest to the town.
What does that really mean? An area of interest to the town?
Looking up the exact wording as we speak.
That's our way to the bridge.
I mean, that's not what, are we working off that, do we have that?
It was adopted by the town council and approved by the state. So yes, this is our comprehensive plan as of this summer.
And are our ordinances aligned with it?
We are in progress with that. They are, obviously do not change, uh, a drop of a hat just because we adopted a new plan. But the goals and standards of a diverse housing type of, if we want to avoid the word affordable, because there is specific definitions tied to that, we, workforce housing is explicitly mentioned.
I couldn't find a definition for workforce housing.
We don't have a definition of workforce housing, but it falls into the- I know, and that's what I'm saying, if we want to avoid the affordable because it is a specific thing, we can.
Well, I just found that, you know, when you say, oh, well, this is an example of a different type of housing and it's affordable.
I guess actually we do use the word transition, uh, for that corridor, it's the-
I just remember hearing-
Corner area that just goes up to two trails and then we have a transition corridor that goes along the road right in front of this park for, to identify that we have a need for infrastructure in this area to support not just the park, but a additional area- to support not just the park, but a additional area of existing dense development that goes along the lake and on the other side of the road near the town park. And we also identify that there's a likely a need to work on the crossroads of, um, what is it? Manchester and twenty-five there, the, where the circle is. There's been a lot of interest in those properties. So this is not entirely outside of what the town is identifying as an area that may be seeing growth. It is also supporting town goals of diverse housing types. And it is also, and I very much caution the board this, that we should not be taking the comprehensive plan over the zoning ordinance. And the zoning ordinance very explicitly allows this.
It allows an expansion.
And we cannot deny this in compliance with the ordinance just because we are somewhat concerned that it may not be a hundred percent be in with the comprehensive plan.
No, I.
That is not something we can do legally.
I'm, I'm just saying that it's in a rural section. It is supposed to be, uh, and I'm going with what is right now because that's what we have to work on is what's in place right now when this plan is submitted to us. And I totally get that the appeals board said it could be expanded. Great. Um, I just find that an expansion of this magnitude does not, in my mind, go with what exists in our comprehensive plan in our ordinances. And by following.
This is very much in accordance with the ordinances. I mean, if you can find a point where you're not, I mean, we have gone over this in much detail and made sure this is in compliance with the ordinance, the densities that they are proposing are explicitly allowed per the ordinance. And we are, are doing it per the book. I mean, I, I, I get your argument about the comprehensive plan and this is in the rural zone. I do not believe that is something that the board can use to hold up this project. I think that very equivocally cannot take that over the hard language of the zoning ordinance and the zoning ordinance explicitly allows this.
ZBAs already granted him the right to do this, right?
Right, and and for their requirements and you have your own requirements that we need to review and and that's what we're doing, but we, if you want to deny, if you have issues with how this is set up, you need to point to exact zoning ordinance language that you, we can use for that. We can't do that on a, on the feel of the comprehensive plan.
I have a question. Can you enlighten me? Cuz I just don't remember. On your emergency access road over Dow Road, where's that stand with, uh, Mikeli, Mikeli, whatever his name is, the gentleman that has the log cabin out there?
I have that.
His, his driveway. So the gate will be, he'll be able to come out and use that road as he's using now, right? And then it'll be gated. He can't go down.
Is there an easement or something? That's the part I didn't understand. He's got some kind of an agreement there?
Hasn't, when he bought his property, I looked at his deed, he was granted an easement by the two owners prior to use the park infrastructure for that.
He has the right to use. And then he owns half of Dow Road in front of his law.
And abandoned.
You have the right to use that as well?
Yes.
With him somehow, yeah.
What about where that continues on all the way over to the next road over? Is there any problems with it not having like an opening through the lots, like between the lots to make sure that that like still continues on or?
Yep, so he'll have, uh, I believe we built him a driveway. And now he goes to the end, it's right, and we show another driveway that he'll use. We'll build him a connector.
Yeah, I was, I was talking about the other, the other side.
Down towards the bridge? For you?
Yeah. Uh, past the new development. Like. Like right here, like where it shows it is, does there need to be a, a spot in between there to allow that to keep going?
So no, that easement has been.
You own both sides of the road.
We own both sides of that and that, there's no passage, um, through there at all. I think.
Well, would you, would you wa- would you want the residents to at least have?
Uh, that's an interest, uh.
You know, like a tra- a trail, you know, like a.
Yeah, like, um, we can go back with that. We could just show it like trail connect.
I mean, if, if you don't do it, they probably will, you know, just by walking constantly.
Lower end slot, see eighty-three.
Right, right, and if, if that's not even developed for a while, then they might just.
It's a deal with the Dow Br- the culvert bridge. Is that, it's a national historical?
I believe it's listed now, yeah.
On the register now, is it passable? I have to go over there. Anybody reading that?
No.
No?
Yeah.
I don't even know if it's passable. Is it just a collapsed culvert?
On that walk, on that dirt road?
Uh, pa- well, past it. Well, not something the, the sidewalk has got to. It's, it's over Josie's Brook.
It'd be easier to access it from the cemetery, I think.
Yeah.
Um, one question I just thought of, uh, I was, I was trying to wrap my head around when the construction starts on road. Is it three or B? Three? Three, um. It seems, it seems like there's a huge hill, right, on a couple sections and you have like erosion. Are all the trees gonna be cut down and then you put down the erosion control? Or would not cutting down the trees just prevent the erosion from happening?
So anywhere we have to change grades, right, grade out, so we'll, we'll clear, all the trees will come out from the limited disturbance line. So we take all those trees, we grub that out. As they're doing that, they will put in, uh, erosion control on the bottom. But then after they clear and grub that and get it to the grade it's supposed to be, erosion control madding immediately goes down and gets pinned, right? And so the, this will be something the D E P will actually have three P I inspectors out during construction to make sure that this all happens. Um, you know, the contractor's not gonna do that in the rainstorm. He's gonna find, he, he, he will only open up and he will, uh, button down everything he does in a manner that won't cause, uh, you know, huge washouts.
Well, and for the, for the lots, especially on the inside, are you gonna be like cutting into?
Yep, so.
To make it flat?
Yep, we cut in and then terrace it up.
And then. And then terrace it up. So people are gonna have like a wall in their backyard?
Yeah, they'll have a big, they'll have a, a hill.
Steep as gotten.
Yep.
It's pretty steep too, right? I, it, it looked, it looked very steep on the, on the plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I believe it's three to one slopes up to eight feet or ten feet and then terraced in and then up again. So it reduces, so you know, if you had any, um, anything fall down or slide, it hits the terrace before it picks up a lot of.
That's just very different from the existing park, like, which is pretty flat.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Think he'll hit rock?
We'll see you for the blasting permits.
We'll see you for those.
You will definitely hit something.
Um, okay. Do we need to grant a waiver on one eighty-one, eighty-four, A eight, the granite monuments at all the external corners?
If you'd like, if they would like you to.
I'm sure they would.
So that's an interesting question cuz we don't pin these. So these aren't lots of.
No, no, this is the outer perimeter.
Oh, all the perimeter? Well, technically wouldn't they already be there?
Well, they, they, they opted to set pins.
Oh, right.
Mr. NATO set pins.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah, okay, we'd like to have that waiver. Yeah, we don't wanna go out with.
So you need to request that.
Yes.
In writing. Now, there are some corners here that don't have anything, so I guess we can discuss whether they they need to mark those. What's the deal on skip road? There's about four or five angles down through, well, maybe six angles, I don't know. They, does that, does that have to be marked?
I mean, I don't know how we handle the internal roads. Um, they're, would not need to be monumented like we would a public.
It's an abandoned one though, right?
So.
Skip roads discontinued, so the property line goes down the center of it.
I'm, I'm not familiar with skip road. I'm sorry, Charlie. Which one's that?
Well, that would be an internal line though. You own both sides of skip road.
Yes.
So I guess that's a moot point.
Is that the old Dow Road? Is that where we're talking, that goes?
No, that skip road runs from, uh, what is it? Liberty down through?
Yeah.
I think that's, or is it Rosan- Rosetta? I guess it runs off the end of Rosetta down to Dow.
Oh, in here.
Yeah, Rosita.
It doesn't matter. So those points wouldn't have to be monumented anyways.
You know far more about monumentation than I do, Charlie, so don't ask me.
That's a lot of rock.
Just thinking about lugging them out there.
I've done it for years.
I know you have to.
Alright. So mostly, as I read through this, what we need is the final review by D E P on a lot of this stuff so we can check it off the list.
Yeah, I mean, I think for preliminary, the board just needs to decide how comfortable they are with the level of re- the engineering review we've gotten so far. I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape on the Goro Palmer's review. We don't have the septic review at this time, but I think we often do septic stuff more closer to the end.
Yeah, I mean.
Um, for our smaller systems, we wouldn't be looking at them in much detail anyway. So I think the big systems, I'm glad we're looking at them. We should be, but I, if the board's comfortable with it, you could leave that to final. But otherwise.
It's, it's the D H I H S, the D E P.
Yeah, I mean, the state permits, we usually leave that to final.
We've set precedence on the last subdivision saying that we're not gonna approve a final plan unless we have.
Right, right. Definitely not gonna give them final until we have all those in hand. That's, but that's the standard. But we could do preliminary if the board was comfortable with the, where we stand on engineering.
If, uh, if we do grant preliminary, do they have a time limit before they come back to the board?
Six months, isn't it? Something.
I think it's six months before the board has the opportunity to say they need to start over. Um, you can still accept final beyond that. It's just you have the explicit ability to say
Gotcha.
that they need to go back to preliminary.
That would be just a motion to reconsider at that point?
I, I don't know the exact wording.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz as I read down through, that seems to be the big thing.
Before we go down that route, I have a question on zoning. I was hoping you could help me out with Scott.
Yep.
Um, is that large wetland there a shoreline zoning area?
Not to my knowledge. We'd have to dig through.
I don't have the phone on me, so I can't pull apart a zone. Zoning, shoreline zoning ordinance map, however, I believe due to the size that it could potentially meet that shoreline zoning.
I mean, we have the wetlands delineation, which has not pulled it out as anything of significance. Um, I don't have an answer off the top of my head.
Um, if it is, would it impact this project in any way?
I don't believe so.
It does appear to extend on to some of the.
We would have to check setbacks a hundred feet if it's shoreline, but aside from that, I don't believe we would. We'd have to check, I mean, as long as, we'd have to check some setbacks and things. Um, I don't personally have a delineation.
Would you be able to pull up that, that app?
Official shoreline zoning map, but yeah, we'd check.
I mean, I don't, it, it would be one of those wetlands delineation dependent things, um.
I, I believe I, I've seen this area called out on our town map, uh, but I just don't have my phone on me.
The town map's somewhat confusing cuz they, it sometimes calls out, uh, just wetland inventory things and then it's tricky.
It was like shaded.
Yeah, so I usually wait to get the wetlands delineation and we haven't pulled that out. I, this, I haven't looked at that in a while now.
Yeah, wetland is special significance. It's gotta be more than just a forested wetland.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
The emergent.
Well, it's of a certain size, I believe.
Right. Ten acres rings a bell, but it could be more.
And it appears to be pretty.
I mean, that is a big one.
Large.
Yeah, just to clarify, I mean, the shoreline zoning, freshwater wetland would be over ten acres in size and we're just limited to what we have ability to, to delineate on our site. So to say that we have, you know, less than ten acres on our site, to assume it's more than that, all we have is the national wetland inventory, which is probably what you saw on your map, on your G I S map, which is a interpretation of aerial images. So it's not really like an on truth, on the ground delineation. So usually it's not anything used for like a regulatory purpose.
Your name, sir?
My name's Lucian Langla. Thank you.
Just wanted to get on the record.
And as far as wetland is special significance, um, it'd have to be over twenty thousand square feet of like open water, uh, cattail, sack type of emergent marsh vegetation, which we just don't have.
Beaver pond?
Beaver pond could create a situation like that.
It is, again, I don't have the full language for you off the top of my head, but when we looked at this a while ago, I mean, I think at this point, I would, I didn't, I haven't looked at that since, since that hasn't changed. I haven't looked at that since they submitted this the last time. So I don't, I don't have the, exactly why I wasn't worried with it for you off the top of my head, but I was not worried about it at that time.
Gotcha. I did, um, comment on that, um, the last time this came before the board to show the extents of any shoreline zoning. Um, that was the one comment I, I brought to, uh, the project, but, um, just something I'd like to see kind of run down, uh, before we head to final.
That was being driven, I remember I, we were talking about Josie's Brook, so. Was that part of it?
Certainly anything off Josie's, we were given plenty of space, so off of that, so I'm not worried about that.
Large one that extends under lock, uh, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, uh, wetland seven, I believe it's shown as in the plans.
So, let's see. On the zoning map, we're looking, they, they call out a smaller, uh, wetlands there. Again, we don't have any way to confirm it and it is, even on that, it's not significantly close. I mean, I, I, the shoreline stuff, especially on wetlands, is dependent on delineations and we have information here to help us know when we need one more than a, a full.
Do we need to use this map as like our guiding, um, you know, requirement and if?
But exact boundaries of sh- shorelines and wetlands, these are, wetland, for shoreline, it gets fuzzy because it depends on determinations and on high water levels and all of, we can't map them off of a national wetlands inventory, which is all this is. And it's not even a, a current one. This is.
I, I thought they would have to like, we would have to like go through revising the, the map, um, for any significant changes on, on that.
Again, shoreline is, if for, certainly for a rural zone and things like that, yes, we revise the map. Um, for shoreline, we, it is the two hundred, we can't use this scale map to measure two hundred and fifty feet off of an upland wetland. I've worn up on wetland edge, like the exact boundaries are subject to, I mean, even the actual zoning borders that we set, when they don't line up with a surveyed property boundary, there is language in the ordinance for the code officer to establish the exact location of that line. And we, we can, we can double check this to make sure we, we've covered, we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and make sure. I don't believe that we have any particular, even if it is a shoreline protected wetland, I don't believe it would impact the layout that they're showing, but we can measure that out and make sure.
Okay.
When does that happen in the process?
And I can't do it for you tonight, but I can do it for the next time we meet.
Yeah.
How, it depends on, it depends on what you guys do here tonight, but the next time we meet, we can have an answer for that question.
Where do we stand on performance guarantees and that kind of stuff? Still up in the air?
I mean, we don't, performance guarantee, it's gonna be, depend a little bit on the boards. We don't have a clear requirement for one because there's no public infrastructure outside of the park. Now, the ordinance does give a clear language to provide one for the internal elements. Now, the applicant can talk to the board about whether we have provisions for how that works in terms of issuing on different triggers of building permits and things like that. They provided us a number that if they're comfortable with, I believe we are comfortable with and we, but we look, generally don't set that till final.
Right.
So we have one and I, I think it looks good, um, but we'll confirm that at, at final.
On page five, the. On page five, the, your, uh, analysis there, uh, one eighty-one ninety-eight. Talked about liability insurance, why, why are we concerned with that? I would think we want errors and omissions insurance, so if it's screwed up, they have some insurance to fix it. What, what is the liability portion of that?
I mean, maybe I just, I use, which exactly are we looking at?
One eighty-one ninety-eight sewage disposal sites, page five. The last two.
So I'm, I may have, uh, in just typing that up, used, uh, the wrong word there, but we, we have a requirement per the ordinance for insurance.
Sewage. Should be errors and omissions, if they admit to do something.
Yeah.
Error in the design.
It is insurance as required per one eighty-one seventy-three point one to four. I mean, that, that's what we need, and we, we, again, we have done that in the past on final, we needed that for
Yep.
the condo development off of Bonnie Eagle.
Seems amazing if we've got preliminary information, we could move forward with staff's recommended motion to find the preliminary application submitted by Atlantic Resource Consultants on behalf of RHP Properties for the expansion.
For public comment, Charlie, before we do that?
Yep. I was just reading through it. I would just add for review purposes at the end of it. Alright, any further discussion by the board?
No.
Saying none, motion to open it up to the public?
Make that motion, go open it up.
One second.
Moved and seconded to open up for public comment. Any further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Good evening, thank you so much for your time tonight. Paul Bradbury, speaking on behalf of David and Elaine Bradbury at three forty-nine Cape Road, uh, we're immediate property abiders. Really appreciate the, uh, the buffers and the additional work that's been done to protect Josie's Brook. But we were hoping that a, an additional condition of approval could be considered by the board, because of the density and the significant impact and the proximity. Again, we recognize, I even heard the high water mark tonight, and a hundred twenty-five feet from the high water mark to Josie's Brook, but this is significant density. And, um, this, we don't want to have a possibility of this becoming an impaired brook or an impaired stream. So it, there's, there's some good and pretty cost-effective opportunities here to work with an environmental firm to do some testing, to gain some baseline assessments. It's pretty simple testing, it's done by the main DEP, we've done it on Watchick Lake, but it would be to test for dissolved oxygen, temperature and conductivity, and E. coli, just four tests. They can all be done at the same time on a monthly basis to establish a baseline before the start of construction. And then for a reasonable period of time, I was thinking a, a few years post-development activity, just so we have that baseline and then the post-condition. Again, as noted by the board, this is pretty substantial development, and, uh, even in the, uh, the stormwater management report, as we all recognize, it was revised November twenty-fifth, uh, November twenty-two-five. All stormwater runoff is ultimately received by Josie's Brook. So I think this is just a, a very reasonable and appropriate thing for the applicant to do, within a certain, I would think, you know, five, no more than five years. I'm not trying to, to do an undue burden, but then we understand and recognize whether there's been impacts from any of the post-development conditions associated with the site. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Board, Jeff Cutler, Dow Road. Um, I've had an opportunity to review this on multiple occasions, um, through the zoning board, and we granted the, uh, the application to move forward. Um, I want to just quickly echo what Mr. Bradbury said in terms of wilder water quality monitoring. One thing, um, I'll remind this board that, that stream, Josie's Brook, is a major contributor to the Saco River. And I know the Saco River, uh, Commission is aware of this project, and so it would be vital to me to re, provide some assurances to them that there is a period of review of that water quality to make sure that nothing's being disturbed based on the scope and scale of this project and how close it is to the water system. Um, I will also state that when we review this project on the zoning board, as far as the, um, the, uh, shoreline zoning issue came in, it was only for the Josie Brook waterway. It did not include the other areas that were asked about this evening in terms of wetlands. Uh, that was according to the code enforcement officer. So fair enough to run that down, but I'm pretty confident that the zoning, the, uh, shoreline zoning only had to do with Josie's Brook, hence the hundred and twenty-five foot setback. One final comment, and I don't know if, Jason, if you can answer this question, but, um, I believe that the hundred and twenty-five foot setback includes an undisturbed vegetated border. Um, I believe that not too long ago, there was a lot of cutting that went pretty close to that brook on the side of where that development, those proposed units are going. If we, if we could know whether that's been void of trees, it would behoove the park, especially because it will impact the water quality. It would behoove the town as well as a condition to make sure that if there isn't a forested strip or a vegetated strip to protect that watershed that there's a condition that the park be responsible to plant trees or plant vegetation to enhance the protection, the downstream protection of that brook. That's the only other thing I'd like the board to consider.
Do you know when that was cut?
A few years ago, so that's my recollection, and trees take time to grow.
This is on the park property itself?
Yep, they, it, it might have predated the new owners, but I, they did an, they'll, they did a huge timber harvest right where those proposed units are going, and I don't know what this, I don't know, again, I don't know if you can speak to that, Jason, if it's been, a lot of that growth is gone, so it might be young growth, but it, it would behoove us to at least look at that and consider planting some additional trees as a buffer to that water system. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak from the public? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Moving saying to close the public hearing. Further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. Want to say something, Jason?
Yeah, I'll just take a quick, uh, response to the couple of public comments, so, geez, I think that tree clearing, at this stage, I believe RHP's on the property for more than eight years? It's, uh, so, so seven years. I have, we've been down by Josie's Brook, I, it's not, yeah, aged forest, but I mean, it's pretty good sta, it's pretty thick and, I don't know that planting tr, like, that's pretty well established back in. Um, I almost got to think, I'm not an environmental scientist, but that regrowth is a lot thicker than like an aged forest would be. Um, so I, I think from, from a buffering sort of natural stormwater buffering perspective, um, it's probably pretty good. Uh, I think, once we get out there and get the clearing limits done, you know, assuming we get approved and everything, you know, we could take a look at that, what's, what's remaining, you know, as we, we get out there. But I, I don't really have any concerns about there being thin buffer, uh, in that area. Um, and just a note on if you are taking into consideration sort of, um, water quality testing. Generally, I don't, I wouldn't be against those sorts of things. Having said that, having worked on projects where, um, it's really important where you test that water, because obviously we're in the middle of a watershed. And so if something is coming outside of that watershed, we want to have a, a control source, you know, we want to test. The testing locations need to be very clear, um, and, uh, fair to, to the applicant.
You'd want to know what's coming into the site at your property line.
Yes, yeah, like I wouldn't just say, let's test Josie's Brook at the bottom. Um, uh, and I think putting this sort of condition on, uh, private project, uh, gets a little, a little dicey. Um, I, I understand it's not my decision, um, but, uh, we just need to be really careful to protect, you know, the applicant and the landowner on these types of things.
Very good. How do we want to move forward here? I mean, from a preliminary standpoint, which is all we could do anyways, would be to give them the preliminary approval. They've, they've submitted all kinds of stuff, a lot of it has to go to review with DEP, DHS, Army Corps of Engineers. It's out of our purview what's going to happen in the Route twenty-five corridor. I went down through the checklist, I don't know if anybody else did, it seems like we had, we had something for every item.
I think we have everything, from my perspective, uh, Charlie, to proceed personally.
I would like to see for final, the decision on closure of the road on twenty-five.
Right.
Just want to make sure that gets looked at. Professionally looked at, I don't know.
Make sure that they can do that, and it's not infringing on somebody else's needed rights.
Right. That would be a problem.
You need a waiver on the monumentation.
As we've seen with property rights recently.
Yeah, I mean, the waiver on monumentation, exactly, Charlie, and then, uh, yeah, we'll look into that and update Scott, and then it may be that we have to cut it off on our, right? So we can prevent traffic from the park using it, we can't prevent the individual landowners from.
True.
Right, so.
Yeah.
It's just where we, where we close it off, maybe.
Yeah.
And that would probably.
Similar to Rosetta Drive then.
Yeah, it would need the spirit of, okay, well now you only have three.
I've got plenty of spare rocks if you run out.
Uh, I think we're going to have some leftover.
Yeah. Okay, um. Alright. What's the applicant's opinion on having a baseline for the quality of the water in the brook, if they don't?
Hmm.
Is that a simple, is that a simple, uh, water test? You pick a spot, you have a test for those four to five items? Whether it's future monitoring, at least it gives you a base of where it was prior to any construction? Is that, I, I'm not involved, I don't, have no idea what's involved with that, so.
Yeah, I, you know, and to be honest with you, I, I'm not either, other than it's just a, I think it introduces, I have to ask myself the question of, you know, where is the introduction of?
Well, crosses, crosses twenty-five near two trails, right?
So I, I would say definitely, um, you'd want to have sufficient testing at the property line, right? And then, but we also have, well, I guess we own the other side of Josie's Brook. Um, I would be, so we have discharge pipes, um, and certainly it's not out of the question that we actually sample our stormwater discharge, which would test sort of surface runoff, uh, water quality. Um, we, the septic system, the closest septic system is like three hundred, four hundred feet away, and that goes into the, um, the wetland sort of on the, the bottom of the property, and then it actually goes out through the marsh. So I, uh, yeah, I, I guess, can we get back to you on that?
Oh, yeah.
Do a little research on that.
Yeah, I just think, you know, it'd be nice to have the applicant themselves tell us either, think it's a good idea, or it's not a good idea, and then we can make a decision as to, you know.
I have a question on that.
You know, if we did move forward with that, and say in a hypothetical situation, the project did increase levels, you know, beyond, uh, pre-development, what would happen then?
I have no idea.
That's the other issue.
Charlie? I, I think that speaking to the Saco River Commission, they do, what happens is if that got identified, the DEP would be called. They would go in and do a review, and then they would make, they could, they would make certain proposals to the, the park. Once they figured out where it was coming from, assuming it's within the park. So the DEP would, would step in, but they're a reactive agency in large, I mean, they're going to scope out these projects initially, but they don't get called in until somebody identifies a problem or a spill. Or a third party does a test and says, oh, this nitrate level's way up. And then they get, they get brought in, and they'll do a further analysis to just determine where might the, the source be coming from, and here's what the owners of that source needs to do to mitigate that. So that's where the DEP would go in. But looking at this, and, and again, I'm not a water expert in terms of testing, but to me, i- it's simple. You, you start here with a baseline test before i- it comes alongside the property, right here, you do your baseline test, and you do another baseline test sort of on Josie's Brook where it empties, right? And then i- if, if this has certain, you know, results versus the results down here, you'll know that somewhere along this area, there's a, there's a potential problem. Because I know on this side, there's no houses, there's no development on this side, it's all forest and, you know, marsh and protected, protected environment. So if there's something going on, th- that's going to be the primary culprit to be looking at, so, just food for thought.
Is that within our purview to, what a quality is, right?
I mean, it's definitely something we look at, I have not run into this kind of, uh, pre and post-testing before, but I, I think it's something we could consider. I'm, I do agree with Patrick on the, but what do you do with it then? So I think we'd have to look into more about what happens.
I don't remember doing anything on residential, I can remember in the past doing projects, uh, industrial type projects, where you, where you create those baselines because of, you know. Well, different, it's a completely different situation.
Yeah.
I guess we could look into, excuse me, we could look into that, see if we, you know.
I think we have been, and DEP will also be doing our due diligence to do the ahead of time, do the review to make sure that we, there are no known issues with this. That this is designed in a way that contains runoff and that the septic systems are designed appropriately. Like we are, we're doing our job to protect water quality as best we can. And then it's, go from there. I think I, I'd be interested in what the applicant has to say on this topic in general, as we come into the next stages, which help alleviate concerns, see what they can propose as something that maybe is more amenable to all, all parties. Um, and then we can deter, take that information with what we've been given here tonight by the public and see if and what we feel is useful. But I think that's going to be an evolving target. And maybe it will be that we're comfortable with what's designed, and we don't need to do anything, but let, um, it's fair to make sure, so we'll, we'll talk about that.
Carolyn?
Can we run down what those five tests were?
Eight twenty-two PM.
We just, so I can think about that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Mr. Bradbury, would you like to just rea- reiterate those for us?
Yeah, these are pretty, and we received these from Forest Bell of FB Environmental, it's, uh, cost-effective, it's dissolved oxygen, temperature, conductivity, and E. coli. So E. coli is a proxy for, you know, septic, right? So that's all we're looking for, and it's similar to testing that's been done on Watchick. Um, but none of this watershed goes to Watchick, it actually all comes to Josie's Brook, and that was the concern.
Yeah. Thank you.
Just playing, uh, devil's advocate, with the setbacks that are being done, would that get the developer off the hook as far as? get the developer off the hook as far as anything? I mean, the setbacks are put there to prevent Josie's Brook from being contaminated.
I mean, ultimately, though, they have an issue with the septic in it.
Oh, yeah.
It catches and ends up in the brook.
Well, I mean, like, you know, going, going back to my rough calculations, and I was just calculating Pine Tree Estates, I wasn't calculating with, in, you know, the other side of the 25 and stuff, but, you know, you're talking eight, nine, 10% of the town is living in one area with no public water and no public sewer, so.
Has there ever been had, is there a nitrate study on the park for the plumes, for the septic plumes?
Yes, yeah, that goes to DEP.
Okay. I would think that big one that's underneath the, well, I guess it was a play area now. Further left-hand development area, that's got to be one of the bigger systems, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, the existing system, yeah. It's actually bigger than anything we're proposing.
And nothing, nothing on any of that affects the wells that service the property?
No, that, that's, especially that shelf there, is sand as far as you can dig, so it just.
Big sand hill, but.
Yeah, just like right in here, purifies that water pretty well. In fact, there used to be an old injection well location right next to it, that that water still tests as clean as, we obviously can't use it because it's proximity to the septic system, but there was an old, that water was as clean as you could get, and they just, then they abandoned it.
I would make the motion to find the preliminary application submitted by Atlantic Resource Consultants on behalf of RHP Properties for the expansion of Pine Tree Mobile, excuse me, Pine Tree Estates Mobile Home Park at map lot 5-32, 5-33, and 615, complete as presented for review purposes.
I'd second that.
Move and seconded, further discussion by the board. Seeing none, all those in favor? Two, three, unanimous, okay. Step one. Are we in a position to move forward with a preliminary approval at this point? Or do we think there's still too many loose ends?
There's a lot of loose ends personally.
I believe we're ready to move forward. That's my two cents.
I believe everything we ask for preliminary approval. Could be some changes as we move forward into final.
Yes, I would agree with that. It's not ready for final, it's ready for preliminary, in my opinion.
We don't have the actual conditions for preliminary. Some listed here that will move forward to final.
Those are just for everyone's, knows what's coming, and we can all talk about it, but usually preliminary, we just get preliminary, and we set conditions formally at final.
Right.
Just so that we don't lose any of this, I put it in the memo.
We've got to get all of the DEP, Army Corps, DHHS, all that stuff. Applicants, have they furnished the deed restrictions that are going to go in the lease for the 55-plus for counsel to review?
I don't believe we have that language in place, no. I mean, because it's not a deed restriction per se, I know, it's part of their policies.
Be a restriction in the lease, right?
Yeah, so, but that is in the list of things we would like to see for final, yes.
I don't think you're selling lots down there yet. Andrew? Patrick? Todd? None?
Thinking about the water quality and stuff. I know that, and.
That would be a water condition of approval if we move forward.
But one point I want to make is that that varies, you know, depending on the season. You know, as the temperature decreases, you have higher dissolved oxygen, you know, there's a lot of variables. So I think taking one measurement at one point in time, it's going to tell you some information, but I think you, you may, I wouldn't want that to result in an exceedance in the future and a problem for them, because we didn't think it out. I think that needs more thought. I guess that's kind of where I'm at, but I, you know.
The more bacteria, the warmer it gets, right?
Yeah, it's almost like you need a whole year of sampling once a season, you know, to compare pre and post. But other than that, you know, which is something we could talk about during final, I'm comfortable moving forward with preliminary.
I'll read staff's proposed motion. Move that the planning board grant preliminary approval under the provisions of the Standish Land Use Code for expansion of the Pine Tree, excuse me, Pine Tree Estates Mobile Home Park at map lot 5-32, 5-33, and 6-15, as submitted by Atlantic Resource Consultants on behalf of RHP Properties, having found it to meet the criteria of Chapter 181, Part 3, subdivision regulations, all other relevant standards of the local ordinances, and the requirements of Title 38, Chapter 187, Subsection 4404 of the main state statutes for subdivision review. And then it won't have any conditions at this point, but there are some listed here for your consideration if we move forward with that. Anyone want to make that motion, or a different motion?
Is that all make that motion that you just read for preliminary approval?
Second.
And move and seconded to grant preliminary approval, further discussion by board members? Seeing none, all those in favor? Two, three, four, five, want to oppose? Motion to table this until we have all of the pertinent data?
I mean, you gave preliminary, they'll submit final when they're ready, they've got us on.
In six months?
Be quicker than that. We got third-party review with DEP.
Yeah, DEP.
We're paying extra for it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we have one last item. We have a public hearing this evening, and it is on the, if I get it out here, it's the only Board of Appeals, if I remember right. Amendment to the town of Standish, code, Chapter 181, Land Use, Article 9, Board of Appeals, appeals procedure. Looks like we're adding a bunch to it.
Yeah. So the assumption that I have come into under this, so this is to deal with the expiration of Board of Appeals decisions, primarily the determination on special exemptions. The ordinance has, is written somewhat poorly, and frankly, I think what it was, what happened was it was written before we had special exemption review, and then they added special exemption review and didn't update the expiration process. So it doesn't really explicitly outline a process for which those expire, and the reading, the strict reading of it per town attorney is that it expires after six months. As we have experienced with this project, actually, that timeline is very short for a large project to then get through the planning board process and start pulling permits in six months. Is a, I mean, the planning board process itself generally, for something of this size, could take that long between preliminary and final. And so we wanted to get in there and make sure that this process functioned in a way that I think many of us assumed it was supposed to function, where we now, they have six months to start the planning board process. If they do not start the planning board process in six months, the special exemption approval expires. If they do start it in six months, then the planning board process takes over, special exemption approval is good for the entirety of the planning board process. Should the planning board process end early, whether they withdraw or they're denied, then the six months takes over again. If it has been, the planning process has gone beyond six months, then now the special exemption has expired. If it's somehow got quicker, they have another chance to try again, as long as it's within that six months. But that's the long and short of what this is trying to do.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping. And this has been fully vetted by town attorney that, in the hopes that it will do exactly what I just said.
Move we open this to the public hearing, for the public?
Make a motion to open this to, for, you know, since public comment.
Second. Further discussion by the board? All those in favor? Anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? Don't see anybody.
Motion, motion to close the public hearing.
Seconded.
Move and seconded, close the public hearing? Discussion by the board?
None.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Very good. No opposition.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Can I just make one request? Charlie, can I just make one request before we, I, I think it would be really important for us to get a copy of like the new plan. It's hard to find anything online, couldn't even find the minutes to the appeals board meeting for this project. But if we could at least have, have the.
God, I thought it was posted, like, sorry, I, I got.
I'd like to have a copy that I can like.
No, I'm saying, I'm sorry, the current comprehensive plan that got approved.
So, yeah, what are we talking, current comprehensive plan is?
It was on the town website, because I got asked to pull it and send it out to a bunch of people. That was like months ago.
No, I'd like to copy printed off.
If you want to talk to clerk's office, I'm sure they can print one off for you.
Pretty sure it's on the town website.
I'm doing it as, not as a citizen, as a member of the board.
Zach, give them.
Frigging, I don't, I don't have a hard copy yet.
The PDF, it's like 300 pages.
We'll, I'll see what I can do.
Small thing, it's like a huge frigging thing.
It is.
I remember sending it out, because it was like a PDF of like 300 pages.
Codebook updates on the code company deigns to give them to us.
Like, you sure you want me to send it to?
Frustration on my end as well.
It's a lot of reading.